Welcome back for the study session, section of the meeting this afternoon. During the study session, we cannot pass any ordinances or anything else. This is an opportunity for us to talk to and have exchanges with staff. So you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We have one item remaining on the study session. Actually, there are three, I should say. The first on the study session is an item that's coming back to you from earlier discussions, and that is the possibility of the city acquiring the New River Water District. As the council will recall, the owner-operator of that district approached the city some time ago with the potential of the city purchasing that, request that we consider purchasing the district. At the time, the council gave direction to the staff to do some civic engagement and public outreach to get a sense of what the citizens in that water district felt about that potential acquisition. So the staff have done that, and they have a report for you tonight about the civic engagement and how the different rates stack up between the city and the district. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Public Works and Utility Director, Bill Mattingly.
Thank you, Carl, Mayor and Council. This presentation is going to be done primarily by our deputy director, Mike Weber, and we have Dr. Tara Blanc, who's going to speak about a public survey that we did. So she'll speak to the details of that. And then what we'll do is we'll wrap up, talk about what the potential next steps might be, and take whatever questions throughout the presentation from Mayor and Council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
All right, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the New River Utility Company potential acquisition this evening. The New River Utility Company is a shaded area shown on the slide before you and is the area that has granted the sole and monopolistic right to be the water utility provider for that area by the Arizona Corporation Commission. The area entails about 1.75 square miles and serves approximately 2,900 connections, most of which are residential. The city already does provide sewer services and curbside trash or refuse pickup by the city. Wanted to tell you a little bit—
This is part of the city, right? This is not a county island?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct, sir. The activities that have taken place most recently over the past several months entail a pretty robust and active outreach and civic engagement process, and it took on many aspects, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those now. We did have a kickoff meeting with the Fletcher Heights Homeowners Association, and we approached them with the fact that we had been approached by the ownership of the New River Utility Company with the intent of exploring our potential purchase of that. We let them know that we wanted to garner their thoughts and feelings on becoming customers of the water services of the city. We also had some publication outlining that issue in their Fletcher Heights Homeowners Association newsletter. There was an email blast from Councilmember Edwards regarding a meeting, the meeting. We had city direct mailers. We also had a town hall meeting that was fairly well-attended, and that occurred on May 28th of this year, and that took place at the Rancho Solano Preparatory Academy. And we had about 50 people turn out for that event, and they were all very interested in what we had to say. We did have a number of our staff there. We had set up a number of displays that were individually manned. The individuals who attended were able to walk around and ask questions from each of the presenters. And the format also entailed kind of an informal presentation by Director Mattingly, who fielded a number of questions. And the overwhelming sentiment that we received that evening was one of support for the acquisition of the company by the city. We also established an informational website. We developed a fairly lengthy, frequently-asked questions document in which we addressed some of the common questions that had already been asked of us and ones that we had anticipated would be asked of us. And following the Rancho Solano meeting, we summarized all of the questions that were asked of us, and we provided answers in a FAQ format as well. In addition, there appears to have been a fairly well-coordinated email campaign from the homeowner association, Fletcher Heights Homeowners Association, and we received numerous emails demonstrating support for the city's acquisition of their water providers' company. In total, we had about 82 emails come in. We responded individually to each and every one. Of that 82, 76 were in support, 2 were opposed, and 4 were undecided. There were also various other inquiries that we fielded and addressed throughout this outreach and civic engagement campaign. I was pleased to see that we had good media coverage. The Peoria Independent provided articles about the upcoming Homeowners Association meeting on the 27th is when that ran. June 4th, there was a follow-up article about the results of the meeting. And then on August 27th, there was a good publication about the upcoming survey, which was one of the key components of our outreach program. In addition to all of that, we fielded and addressed and answered inquiries that we received, you know, by voice and telephone and other mechanisms. So the surveys were developed. We mailed those surveys on August 29th. We mailed over 2,760, to be exact, and those emails were due back to us on September 8th. We did allow a little bit longer time until the 19th for some additional surveys to trickle in, and they did trickle in. And in fact, we received some only this week. So the item that became apparent as being very important to the citizens and the customers of New River Utility Company had to do about what is the cost of water? What is this going to mean to my wallet and pocketbook? You know, how do the rates differ? And in addressing those inquiries, we needed to educate the customers of New River Utility Company on one aspect, which was very important and is an element of their overall cost of water. And that has to do with a property line item tax that appears on their property tax annually, and it is a charge that is assessed based on their water usage. And that's a charge that is to be paid ultimately to the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. Now, that district is the groundwater replenishment district, which is used by some water providers, New River Utility Company in this case, to meet assured water supply obligations. New River is a member of CAGRID. Its subdivisions, its lands, in essence, are a member of the groundwater replenishment district, and the property tax recovers on behalf of CAGRID the cost for replenishment of groundwater. So we needed to stress to the customers of New River Utility Company that that CAGRID tax needs to be considered and is in fact part of your overall cost of water, even though it's incurred through property tax on an annual basis, not monthly on a water bill. Now, the city performs its own recharge. Therefore, city customers do not have to pay and do not incur that CAGRID charge. And that's a distinction that we needed to make and did make and had it well-received at the Homeowners Association and in some of the inquiries that we had in follow-up.
Okay, I have a question. If we acquire them, are we going to get out of the GRD? Get them out of the GRD?
Mayor, if I heard your question correctly, would we eliminate the tax? Would we get out of the district? Yes.
Right. So if we acquire this water company, we will take it out of the CAGRID?
Yes, we would de-enroll this area from that district, and that tax would no longer be applicable, which would be just like the rest of the city of Peoria, water customers.
Does anyone have to rule on that?
I'm sorry?
Does anyone have to rule on that?
We have sufficient water resources to cover their obligation, but there is a component where we would have to— The water company, and Michael talked about this later on, one of the components of cost, the water company had Central Arizona Project rights, which required them to pay, even though they were not receiving water and they really have no physical maintenance of getting water from the Central Arizona Project Canal, they had to pay debt service on that. They failed to do that for a number of years, and eventually that water was taken over by the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. But Peoria was watching that process as it happened and made sure that we had a right to recover that water in the event that the city were to acquire a private water utility. So those are mechanisms that we have. So yes, we can do that. We have water resources to cover it, but we would also seek to get those water resources that were associated with the district previously.
Thank you.
Okay, and that leads into a rate comparison or a discussion about the cost of water. The exhibit that you see now is an exhibit that we had actually used at the Homeowners Association meeting, and it compares pretty succinctly the New River Utility Company ultimate cost of water as compared to the cities. And what we've done here is present the metrics and charges for various sizes of meters so that, you know, any customer could look at this and get an idea of what their cost of water would be if they were a customer of the city. So we looked at 3/4-inch, 1-inch, and 2-inch meters, and we looked at the usages that correspond with those meters. These usages that you see were the average usages by that meter side as provided to us by New River Utility Company. So we're looking at their averages for those meter sizes. And we calculated the charge using the New River Utility Company rates. We also calculated what the CAGRID assessment would be expressed as a monthly cost. As I indicated before, the CAGRID fee is actually an annual line item charge to the property tax bill. We express this as a monthly because that's how we bill.
Okay, but on the property tax, it'd be 2050 times 12?
Correct, for 3/4-inch meter. That is correct, Mayor. And of course, you see the totals then. So for a 3/4-inch meter, the effective water cost for New River Utility Company would be 47 compared to our 38 and change. 1-inch, little over $80 compared to our approximate $60 bill. And for a 2-inch meter, $504 compared to our $370. So the important takeaway from this is that when you look at the cost of water, the city's costs are cheaper and much more cost-effective. With that, I would like to introduce Dr. Tara Blanc, and she's here this evening to discuss the survey results, which were a critical component of our outreach program. And Dr. Blanc is an assistant teaching professor in the Soul Price School of Public Policy at the University of Southern California, and she also works as a consultant with Merrill Research and Dr. Bruce Merrill, providing public opinion and market research. She holds a PhD in public administration from the prestigious Institute of Arizona State University, my alma mater, where she served for seven years as an associate director of the Cronkite slash 8 Public Opinion Poll. She has conducted numerous surveys for a wide variety of clients in both the public and private sectors. Dr. Blanc.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting me tonight. I'm just going to give you a quick— Oops. Did I do that? We lost our visual, yeah. This one?
The right one.
The right one? Experiencing technical difficulties. Please stand by. While the slides come up, I will talk briefly about a couple of things that aren't on the slides, so we can do that while we're waiting for the slides to come up. As Mike mentioned, 2,760 surveys were mailed. Each resident in the utility district received a survey and received the opportunity to give feedback and to voice their opinion on the acquisition of the utility. Of those, 804 residents returned their surveys for a response rate of 29%. This is a— In this kind of a survey that is a self-select survey, in other words, you mail it to everybody and then people choose to respond or not, so they self-select whether they're part of the survey, you generally get somewhere between 5 and 10%. So this is a high response rate for a survey like this. So I think that's a good sign that you've got some good information here. Also, it's interesting because technically, this survey generalizes to those people who cared enough to return the survey. However, I would also argue that based on the higher return rate and based on the fact that normally in a survey like this, you tend to get—you always get people who are either very much opposed or very much for something. So you get people who feel strongly about an issue. The people in the middle really don't care enough to respond. So this gives you a good measure of what those people who really have an opinion about this or care about this think. And so I think it's safe to say that this does represent what the customers of the New River Utility Company think about the acquisition. So, yeah, sure.
Did you look at the demographics to see how representative it was?
We did not do—because of the nature of this survey, it was a very—
It's a universe.
I'm sorry?
You went for the universe.
We went for the universe. We did. The only question that we asked was how long the respondent had been a customer of the company, and we asked less than five years, 5 through 10 years, or more than 10 years, and it had no statistical significance whatsoever. So that's the one demographic we asked, and it didn't make any difference, how long somebody had been a customer, whether they were for or against the acquisition. But we didn't ask any other demographic.
No age or anything?
No age, no income, nothing like that, yeah. You know, again, those are the kinds of things that—it's a balance. How much money do you want to spend to collect data versus what kind of data do you really need? It could be important in some studies to look at who the opposition is or who the people who are for it are. I would argue that in this survey, it might not make that much difference, considering the small number of people who are involved. But again, you know, that's kind of a judgment call sometimes, expense versus utility. Some of the numbers that we asked questions about how people felt about the utility itself. 3/4 of the customers were either very or generally satisfied with the service that the utility provides. A small percentage frequently or occasionally experienced interruptions in water service. And as I heard some conversation around here earlier, there was a higher percentage—nearly 2/3 of the people had either frequently or occasionally experienced some issues with low water pressure. In terms of support for the acquisition, the first question we asked was whether the respondent would support or oppose the acquisition. 2/3 of those responding initially said that they strongly or generally supported the acquisition. Later, we gave them the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the cost issues involved and then ask the question again, and I'll get to that in a second. What we also do is we drop out those people who said that they had no opinion on the issue, and so among those with an opinion, 80% of the people with an opinion support the acquisition. People who opposed the acquisition primarily did so on the issue of cost. Their concerns about the water costing them more than it does now. As you can see here, the overwhelming majority don't want an increase in fees. A few people were concerned about the quality or taste of city water service and several other things, but the majority of them were concerned about the cost. So when I was explaining to the respondent that the tax reduction that Mike mentioned earlier would offset the higher rates, so to speak, the number of people who supported the acquisition jumped to—from 68%, actually—I apologize, that typo was my error. I should say 68% to 80% overall. And 88% of those with an opinion after the second round favored the acquisition of the utility. Yes?
So at that point, they knew there would be a saving, so they were no longer saying they were worried about the cost?
Yeah.
I think cost is a real driver here, isn't it?
Definitely, and if you—some of the comments on the response cards were—it's quite evident that people are very concerned about the cost going up.
So to that point, we've made it clear to them that their cost isn't going up. It's actually going to go down, correct?
The verbiage on the survey essentially—I don't have a copy—oh, I do have it with me. The question actually said, "So the city's water rates are currently slightly higher than those being charged by NRUC. However, if the city buys NRUC, a tax that's currently included in your property tax by the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District would be eliminated. If the CAGRID taxes is eliminated, the total cost of water customers receive from the city would be less than they're currently paying." And then after being made aware of this additional information, do you support strongly or support or oppose?
So Mike, I have a question for you. So we're going to go from $47 for the average user, we're going to go from $47.33 to what they're paying through New River right now, down to $38.74. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me go back to my rate sheet here.
It's on one of your slides.
Yeah, that is correct. If you're looking at the meter size for 3/4-inch—
And with that, excuse me, with that decrease in their bill, they're going to gain stability in a system that they currently don't have, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you kind of—for the viewers that are watching, can you kind of explain some of the interruptions that have occurred and what actions the city has taken? Because the city—they're piped into our water system to where when their wells are down, we are actually supplying them the water, correct? And so what I'd like to know is, how often has that been happening? Because I know in talking with you and— that we have done that more frequently in the last couple of months. And so I want everybody to understand that the water that they're currently getting is not a stable source.
Yes. Okay, those are all good points, and I will address those. The city of Peoria does have an emergency interconnect or standby interconnection with the New River Utility Company, and the intent of that interconnection is to provide emergency or backup support when there are issues ongoing within the distribution and production system of the utility company. And some issues that can arise and have arisen that caused us to receive a request from New River Utility Company to open the interconnection to provide water have been issues with their wells going down, mechanical issues with their wells, mechanical issues with their pumping facilities. Those are the predominant causes for activation of the interconnection. And you touched on the frequency of the activation of the interconnection. And we are currently providing water through the interconnection to the New River Utility Company because one of their wells did experience mechanical issues again. It's been a number of months since that same well had some other issues. So we are called upon from time to time to provide backup water for the private utility company.
So let me get this straight. We are currently—and you may have the date—we've been supplying them water for—since June, July timeframe?
Their most recent request is more current—is more recent than that. I don't have an exact date, but I would say that it's probably been within the past month that—
And the rates that they're currently providing, if we were not to go with this proposal, what guarantees would the residents have that those rates would not be increased because they could go back to the Water Commission or Corporation Commission and ask for another increase? Because if I'm not mistaken, their last year's request or this year's request of increase was 87%? If I'm—got my numbers right?
Yes, Councilor Edwards, that was their request. When they made that request in November of 2012, and then ultimately, earlier this year, those rates went into effect. They were more in the 30%, 30, 35%. But that's also very much a function of what customer class you are as well. So that's an average blended across the system. And again, to put a little finer point on what your questions were and what Mike was addressing, there have been intermittent periods of time in this last year where they have had a well problem, where we did indeed supply water for a period of time. When they corrected that well, they got it back online, we shut that connection off, closing a valve. And again, in the last three, four weeks, they've again had a problem with a well, and we are again supplying them until they get that well restored.
And also, I'm sorry, keep asking questions.
I can almost guarantee you the rates will continue to go up, because the Corporation Commission does not rule CAGR.
Well, that's kind of what I'm trying to inform the residents that are watching, is if the city were not to do this, that they could see a potential increase for years to come. And I know in talking with both of you at length several months ago, there was talk at one time that if the city of Peoria wasn't interested in the purchase, that there were potential other customers or other companies that were looking at the potential buying us. What guarantees would the residents at that point have that their water would be stable?
Councilor Edwards, there really aren't any guarantees that their rates would be stable. Certainly, the company could be acquired by others. There are—other private companies would look at the value of this company very differently than we might. The question of how much would they be willing to invest in it? How could they invest in it? What other resources do they have? You know, it might take the acquisition of multiple other companies to try to aggregate them and then see what they would do to improve those systems. So, you know, others could theoretically acquire them, but I'm not sure that it would make sense from them from a financial point of view to do substantial investments to improve the system.
But the possibility is there.
Yes.
That if New River decides that they don't want to be in the water business anymore and a potential buyer comes up and offers them X amount of dollars, they could jump at it and say, "It's all yours."
Yes, and then whatever that new operator would choose to do would be, you know, what—
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas? I just have a quick question regarding the comparison on the rates. My question is, is the total city water bill for this group of people, does that include acquisition cost at all? Or how are you planning to pay for this, I guess, is my question?
We'll get into that a little more later on, but let me address your question now. The proposal would be to not burden the rest of the city residents with the acquisition of this water company. So it would not raise rates for the rest of our citizens to acquire this company. The acquisition would be funded through probably a low-interest loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFA. We've borrowed a lot of money from them in the past on various projects. But what we would use to service that debt would be the revenues that we receive within the district. So we would raise the rates, as we indicated earlier, from what they are now to what our current residents are paying. And the total acquisition cost would include several components, but one would be what we would pay for the company, what would it cost us to make the interconnections to tie it into the rest of our system, whatever improvements we find that we need to make for the company immediately in terms of their pumping equipment and reservoirs and booster stations. And then, as we were talking earlier, with the CAGR D and the water rights, all of those factors would be a component of what the total cost to acquire, but we would seek to negotiate something such that it would not burden the rest of the citizens. It would be entirely funded within the rate base of this district.
So just to clarify, then, say Resident A that lives in the district that uses 11,000 gallons would pay less than Resident B that lives in this new district by some small amount because they're amortizing that cost? Or would the bill still be the same?
We would charge them the same rate as we charge all the rest of our citizens. We would not surcharge them. We would not add an additional cost on their bill to— We would not surcharge them, we would not add an additional cost on their bill to pay that debt service. But since we're not now enjoying the revenue from that district, we have that net plus revenue, and that's what we would use to pay the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. James?
Yeah, I'm kind of getting back to the survey, and you did ask them, you did tell them that they would save money if they went to the Peoria system, but you didn't tell them how much, it was just kind of, so I'm surprised it got to eighty-eight percent. That's very high, considering you didn't tell them it was going to be about twenty percent.
No, we didn't. And part, part of the, the issue, of course, was space and time, but it's interesting that people just wanted to know that.
Yeah.
They would say, they, there would be a savings there with the taxes.
They weren't concerned about how much, maybe some were, that's why.
There, and there were some, there were some comments on the surveys, there were questions about how much, I would, I would need to know how much before I would change my mind, or I would like to know how much. But there, there were a handful of comments to that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions on, on that portion, we'll continue on with next steps. What we envision to, to be the next steps in this process would be to seek direction from council to enter into discussions with the New River Utility Company ownership regarding the potential acquisition that we've been talking about. We would also like to conduct an appraisal to determine a fair value of the company. And we would do internally a system condition assessment and commit to updating council on progress and findings at a future study session. With that, I'll take any other questions you may have.
James? Okay, yeah, I kind of have a, maybe a repeat of Mr. Thomas's question, and you did, you did say that you're not going to charge customers outside of this district for the acquisition and to help pay for the rates.
Yes, sir. They would, they would not be charged outside the district.
And then, but you're, there is going to be a cost to acquire the New River District water.
Yes.
And you, you talked about a low interest rate, what would it be a bond like, right?
It would be similar to a bond. It would be through the Infrastructure Finance Authority, and typically they sell bonds to, to cover the loans.
When I look at your graph on your numbers, I see the city water bill, and that's really the, the water bill that others are paying outside of the district too, right?
Yes.
It's thirty-eight point seventy-four. So you're not adding to their water bill or amortizing the cost of the, of the bond?
No, we would not be.
So how are we going to pay for that bond then?
It would be covered by the revenues within the district, and perhaps Mr. Brent Mattingly could address that more thoroughly than I can.
You mean like the property tax revenue?
No, there would not be property tax, but all be on the water, it would be the water revenues.
Water revenues, okay, yeah, I would appreciate that being addressed.
So the concept is that if you looked at New River Utility and the revenue stream that it would generate if the city owned it and charged the same rates to its customers as we do to anybody outside, our normal customers, the differential between the revenue stream and the expenditures associated directly with operating the New River Utility Company, there's a net cash flow, net income. That net cash flow would then be used to pay the debt service on the amount that the city would borrow for the four items that Mr. Mattingly mentioned. So the, we, the acquisition price, the improvements that need to be made at various points to connect the two utility systems together, any improvements within the New River utility system, such as to their wells and pumping facilities and those types of things, that would be determined by Mr. Weber's crews going out and assessing the system. And then potentially also the charge to purchase the CAP water through a payment to the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. So we've identified kind of those four categories of costs that would be part of the acquisition, if you will. Again, we would probably be looking at the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority to borrow, get a loan from them that might cover all four of those costs. And then the debt service on that loan would be repaid from the net cash flow coming out of the New River utility system. We would not be looking to city customers outside of that boundary to be providing financial support on the repayment of those loans.
And what would the timeline be on that?
I would guess a twenty-year borrowing, but we would have to sort through all of that.
Now, what about the cash flow outside of this district? What do we do with that, those funds? Because it's not just this district that has that positive cash flow, where as people pay their water, water bills.
Are you referring to normal city customers?
Yeah.
So the same sort of, we set our, we come to the city council and recommend utility rates, both for our water system and our wastewater system, that are sufficient to cover the expenditure needs of those utility systems. Those expenditure needs, as, as you know, when you think of the utility budget or normal, you know, personnel, utility costs, paying for the water itself, there are also borrowing costs associated with our own utility system, there's, so there's debt service on that that our normal rates pay for, those types of things.
So we're actually looking at an economy of scale here. We already have a lot of people serving many more customers, supplying them with water, and that effort is, this new district is going to benefit from that, I think, right? Isn't that, because you're not adding new employees, right?
I don't want to speak for utilities, I'm not sure if there would be new employees associated with that or not, I would guess not. But there are some economies of scale of taking a fairly small system and incorporating it into the city's very comprehensive utility system, much more robust than what New River Utility is able to offer, the water supply sources, the backup water supplies, those types of things.
I think that's a significant part of why we can do this, right?
I think it's a significant part of why this, in our opinion, would be beneficial to.
Without having higher rates in, in this area.
Right, so having multiple connections, as an example, between, just as one example, between our system and their system should alleviate some of these water pressure concerns. Perhaps their pumping facilities that would be, our pumping facilities would be used, integrated into their system. There may be improvements in their system that need to be made to address issues such as the water pressure issue. Again, we have sources other than just pumping groundwater to provide a consistent water supply to those customers.
Thank you.
One good question. Would we be depending on the same wells that keeps breaking down if we bought this?
Mayor Barrett, we would refurbish whatever equipment they have there that makes sense. We would certainly use those wells to this, to the degree it made sense. Primarily, what we would do initially, though, would probably use surface water, which we currently have available at our co-owned facility with Pyramid Peak, so we'd probably be using direct delivery CAP water. This is in an area that receives a lot of that right now in our own system. So those wells might go into more of a backup capacity, but we'll use the assets that are there to the, to the degree it makes sense in the most efficient way.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Sort of to follow up on that, what would you say, or have we looked at kind of their infrastructure and overall? Is it in pretty good shape? Is it, does it look like we're going to have to invest a great deal in changing, you know, water lines or massive sort of well items or whatever it might be in the near future?
Councilor Thomas, we haven't looked at it recently, and that's one of the things that Mike and his crews would be looking at, but they'd be looking more at the equipment. What we would be looking at, let me back up. The system is a new system. The system was built through the nineties. They built it according to our standards. I'm talking about the water lines, the fire hydrants, the water services, et cetera. They use city standards. So we're very comfortable with that, and because it is a new system, unlike some of the other private systems that serve some of the county islands in there, which have small water lines, you know, they have two-inch water line serving a number of customers, or we have a minimum of six or eight-inch water line serving a number of customers. It's a very modern water system, so we feel very good about that. The things that we do have concerns about would be what is the current status of their pumping equipment? It's, you know, as time goes on, you need to go into the water storage reservoirs, drain them, clean them, recoat them, repaint them. That's typical kind of maintenance that you would need. Those are the things that we anticipate we would have to do. Certainly, we'd be looking at these wells because they, you know, they produce a lot of water, and we'd want to maximize their value, but we would want to assess their condition as we go into this, so we're aware of what those costs are going in to the degree we can. And there is one other major item that we would do, and this is something that we're doing in the city right now. We do electric remote read on water meters. These meters were the original meters, and so they're, you know, fifteen years old. They need to be replaced. Meters you replace about a ten-year cycle, so that would be a cost as well. But those are the, what we believe the costs in front of us would be. But in, you know, in summary, it is a very competent system, they have supply problems.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you very much.
So Mayor, Council, we're asking if you would give us direction to move forward, if that's what you would like us to do, we'll begin negotiations.
It's a pleasure, the council. Should we start negotiations? Yes, yes. Definitely.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We do have two other items, Mayor, on the study session agenda, and I'm not sure whether time, remaining time over the next fifteen minutes would allow us to cover either of those issues. I know you have indicated that there's a willingness to have a special meeting next week to take care of these, but it's really your pleasure at this point.
Council, should we start, or should we like?
My, my, I would like to express my, I would like to discuss them tonight.
I think we can get started, I'm not going to finish.
Okay, just start.
Okay, the next item is an item we've titled affiliate partner agencies. And this, the council will recall, was an item that was last discussed by the council several meetings back, and it was originally brought to the council by Councilmember Thomas, and it was a question of regarding how the city works with the various agencies that have contractual relationships with the city for services and activities in a whole host of different areas. The direction of the staff was to look at policy alternatives and direction that the council might choose to provide and bring that back to the council in the study session. So Deputy Manager Jeff Tyne will lead this presentation with the support of Chief Assistant City Attorney Steve Burke.
Great, thank you, Carl, and getting you new mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity. So based off of the, the direction that we did receive from the August twenty-seventh city council study session, the city staff developed what we would call a framework for discussion on developing a policy. And each one of those steps, we would look for you to provide some direction on that. Specifically, if we were to look at that, the result, city staff will tee up some questions to clarify, first off, what would be some of the potential restrictions to these affiliated agencies? Second would be some of the potential agencies that would be applied under this policy. Next would be some of the various enforcement options. Of course, if there is a policy for restrictions on political activities, how would we enforce those activities? And then lastly, to discuss a little bit about the expected administrative oversight as well. So just a quick background as we begin with some of the discussion on restrictions on political activity. So currently, there is no defined policy which restricts political activity for affiliate agencies here at the city. In addition, most contracts with our larger affiliated agencies do not have a conflict of interest provision. But that said, the city does utilize contractual and some code provisions that do limit conflict of interest for some parties, and let me just give you some examples of that. For example, the Chamber of Commerce, the city has a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, and that contract includes a lobbying or a non-lobbing clause stating that the chamber shall not pay or influence an officer of the city if that action may have an impact on any nature or the subject of the agreement. So the focus really was to avoid lobbying activities on it.
Mr. James?
Yeah, you just said we don't have any rules on this, but now you're giving us a rule that we have with the chamber.
Councilmember, there are, there are no policies in place that the city has for affiliate agencies with regard. There are some contracts that are in place that have some provisions, and, and this is just some of, now, one of the items that we want to bring up and we'll talk about is this is a provision just for non-lobbing. We haven't fully discussed what would be all of the restrictions of political activity. This is just for lobbying activity.
We do have some reference points already.
Yeah, exactly right. The next would be also in the city's, what we call the general funds not-for-profit grant. You may recall during the budget process every year, the city council has seen fit to have a general fund not-for-profit allocation that is set aside for different social, social service agencies to compete for funds, and the not-for-profit committee, which is a subcommittee of the council, decides on that. All of those agencies, should they receive funding, do enter into a contract as well. It's a similar non-lobbing clause, very similar to what you see in the, the Chamber of Commerce clause that, that talks about the same kind of limitations on influencing officer or employee of the city. And then there's also an additional comment in there that none of the funds shall be used for any partisan political activity or to further the election or defeat of a candidate for public office. Last thing, just wanted to mention that vendors doing business with the city of Peoria are precluded from engaging the city council during their solicitation process, when a solicitation is out. In addition, vendors are subject to some state statutory limitations as well. However, once that item, that solicitation is placed or is established or were placed on an agenda, those stipulations do not fall into order anymore. So one item that, if I may, if we can go through some of these, and I'm watching the time, I beg you. So a couple of the possible restrictions on political activity that, that could be considered, one of those would be restrictions to the actual agency activities themselves, and that would be restricting the agencies that are affiliated with the city from contributing to city elections, from contributing to council member activities such as political activities, contributing to municipal ballot items, or sponsorship and/or donations to political events. The second bullet really, also, agencies often have governing officers that oversee the overall policy and direction, commonly have an executive director or high-level positions to help administer the direction of the board. And there could be restrictions that are placed on those agency officials, including holding council member positions or contributing to elections, to activities and to municipal ballot items. At this time, I thought I would ask Mr. Berg maybe to speak a little bit more of the legal perspective to this as well.
Just briefly, on that particular issue, I know when Mr. Kemp discussed this with you at the last study session, he talked about the impact on the First Amendment that a proposal like this would have. Anytime a government's looking to take an action that may impact the First Amendment in any way, we're always looking to make sure it's narrowly tailored. We want to make sure that we're addressing only those specific policy goals or objectives that you have, and that we do so in the most narrow way possible. It's one of the things that courts look for when you've got a First Amendment impact. So, for example, this issue about who would be subject to this from the nonprofit corporation standpoint, we don't want to have it be anybody associated with the nonprofit in any way. It's important that we look at a defined group of people, whether it's directors or those decision-makers or others, so that we make sure we're narrowly focused in on those key people that we want to impose the restriction on and not impose it on anyone. So it was just a chance that Jeff provided to me to show one example of the sorts of things we'll look at when we put a policy together, if you choose to go forward in this way, that's as narrowly tailored as it can be to meet your objectives, and that'll keep us in compliance with the First Amendment, we believe.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this would be one point where we would be seeking some council direction, what would be included within those political activities, and then we would craft that in a policy for you, for future consideration. Another item then would get to, would be agency definition. The, the city does have financial relationships with various community-based agencies, and this includes not-for-profit, social agencies, arts and cultural councils, various educational institutions, service groups and the like. In some instances, the city provides annual funding to these agencies. They're often identified in the annual budget process. Sometimes the city enters into arrangements with the federal government as pass-through for such items as community development block grant and home grants, where the city allocates some agents, or federal funds in that case. For the purposes of this policy, city council appeared to concentrate their discussions in the last meeting on agencies. in the last meeting on agencies that receive city operating funds and that perform services that were deemed beneficial to the Peoria citizenry. So with that in mind, a couple of different ways that that could be defined is, there is a current partner agency budget policy. So during the budget process, certain entities that requested funding could be defined as a partner agency. Those are agencies that provide a community-based service, that have a historical relationship with the city, that have a separate budget appropriation, and that maintain a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) status under the IRS Code. So that's one, and I'll show shortly a listing of some of those agencies that currently would be placed within that. Other considerations that were brought up in the last study session included some kind of financial relationship that would come into play. So whether there was a percentage of the agency revenues that comes from the city or a certain threshold amount of a cap or, excuse me, a minimum city amount of allocation, that could be another thing that triggers what we would have an affiliate agency that would have to fall into this category. Or ultimately, we could have agencies as defined by the council, so that it may be annually in the budget process, it's identified which agencies that you would have. These are options, again, that would be something that we would look for council direction on that. Let me give you an example of what that would look like. A partner agency as defined in the budget process right now would only include those in green, which would be the Peoria Chamber of Commerce, Theater Works, and the Peoria Diamond Club, all which have separate allocation amounts identified in the budget. Some of the other agencies that we do, commonly do activity, they don't fall necessarily within that partner agency. If we were to look at just a financial relationship, you can see a number of different agencies, depending on what that parameter would be, really could fall or qualify within that. So, you know, depending on what is the general fund allocation, what is the purpose of them, their status, and items like that. So the next item that we would go to would be, when the time is appropriate, we'll talk about what would be the council's decision on which of these agencies would qualify for this affiliate agency policy.
Okay, questions?
So that's a complete list, is it?
This is not a complete list. This was, in working with city staff, we identified just a listing of agencies that we were aware of in the last couple of years that have had some kind of monetary arrangement with the city.
Kind of a continuing relationship.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Lastly, and I can make this very brief, the last two policy considerations for the council to consider would be enforcement and for compliance monitoring. With regard to enforcement, there's a couple of different actions that the city council would be able to enforce, to follow through on this. One of those would be the cancellation of any contract that the city has with these agencies. That could be performed either administratively or by explicit council action. The next would be some kind of financial withholding of dollars. The city may include provisions in their contract to limit funding or require the refunding of city funds. And if necessary, a contract provision could also be in that would trigger some kind of financial review of the agency if that were something that came forward. And then the last council option that we would go through would be regarding to compliance and monitoring. So based off of these different provisions, there's different ways that we would obviously address these types of agencies to see if they are indeed complying. The first, similar to what we do through a lot of our election-based activities, is just more through items handled on a complaint basis. So as the city received a complaint of an agency that is involved in one of these political activities, the city then would research that and rectify the situation and remedy the situation. The other would be to have some kind of staff oversight of contract compliance. That would likely require some additional resources to have a data repository of these agencies, to ensure we have an active listing of the Board of Directors or of the elected or of the executive director that is in that, to ensure that the contract compliance and a number of things like that. So with that, those are the four categories that we would look at that would be part of a policy, should the council want to have an affiliated agency policy. And given the interest of time, I'll address any questions, but we'll be prepared to speak with you at the next study session as well.
Can you... Mr. Tyne, can you go to the first part of the four items you discussed?
Yeah. Excuse me a second, I gotta back through this a bit. Do you want me pushing like three and enter? Well, it's okay, I'll do it. Any specific area?
Yeah, restrictions on political activity.
Okay.
No, if you could go to the screen that has the activities that they can't be...
Yes, this, right.
Okay, can you explain briefly each one of those bullet points contributing to city elections, all the way down?
Right. Well, and again, it would have to be defined. Contributing could include a number of different things. It could be endorsing, it could be a financial contribution, so that would have to be likely something that is defined, but that is generally what it was referring to. Likewise, contributing to council member activities, if it is fundraising activities or something that's outside of the specific election, it was generally referred to that is what staff was considering on that.
These are all tailored to political activities, not an event at a park, correct?
Very good point, yes. This was considering political activities, council member, yes.
Then you don't have to go on, we're good.
We're running a tag. I have a question on the restriction on agency activities. You're not talking about the individuals, you're talking about the agency itself.
The first one, restrictions on agency activities, was just the agencies themselves as an entity, correct? And then the second, restrictions on agency officials, would be officials that are linked or are perhaps, as we had termed, decision-makers, was a term that I think we researched, shall we. So it could include a board of directors, it could include an executive of folks from that.
We're coming up on regular meeting time. Could you send this to all the council members for us to look at and think about between now and next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're going to adjourn the study session? We've got two minutes until the regular session.